I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's now 6:02 PM. If Clerk Segrist could take the roll.
All right. Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek is currently not with us. The River River Flat Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman is also not with us yet. And then Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. I would like to have a voice vote to allow us to go into a closed session.
Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for the Open Meetings Act for the purposes of discussing legal strategy regarding pending litigation.
I have a second, please.
Support.
Sir, thank you, Summer. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Anthony.
A voice, yeah, I'm sorry, we got back the voice roll. Thank you.
All right, Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Segrist. Aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Williams.
Hello, hi. Good evening. Could I call for a motion to move from closed session back into open session? As with all things we're doing with Zoom meetings, it has to be a roll call vote.
So moved.
Aye.
All right, Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek. Segrist, aye. Slavens. Snyderman.
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye. Okay, we're now back in open session. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of item G2, which is consider approval resolution and furtherance of tentative settlement in the matter of Meyer versus Canton Township at all.
So moved.
Okay.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. By voice.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye. We have one set of minutes to be approved for the March 31st, 2020 meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Staying in conformance with the alignment of the agenda, do we have any citizens online that may want to make public comment, Clerk Segrist?
Mr. Supervisor, so anybody who is currently attending can raise their hand right now if they have any comments to make or could issue them in the form of a question, which is another option. I will take this opportunity while people figure out the technology barrier if they are interested. Let everybody know that in our notice to the public, we did allow people to drop off comments. Dropbox, email my, my email or submit them electronically. We received no public comments. And I see currently that nobody has submitted a public question. And I see no hands raised yet for the attendees.
If I may, just to define at this point, if anybody is online that would like to talk about one of the two agenda items.
Or three.
Please speak about that during that agenda item as opposed to now. Now it's just general open public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? There is no public comment. We have, let's see, a call for a motion from Treasurer Slavens for payment bills.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Exactly. Those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye through a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Michael's on mute.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Very good. We have one item on the consent calendar to be read as a single motion.
I apologize, being the technical, taking notes for minutes and being the person who technically runs the meeting is challenging. So the speed at which I can do so is going to be slower than a typical meeting. I apologize. I'm trying to figure out who was the support for payment of the bills.
Stephen.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented, item C1, consideration of second reading of an ordinance repealing chapter 10, Article 2, teen clubs and Article 3 amusement devices and arcades, chapter 14, Article, Article 6 kennels and Article 7 indoor pet boarding facilities, chapter 46, section 46-5, fortune telling and palmistry and code of ordinances and amending chapter 18, sections 18-1 to 18-800 businesses.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye by roll call. Clerk Segrist will call the roll.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye. Now for the general calendar, first item up is item G1, which is consider approval of emergency purchase orders.
All right.
Michael, you're on mute, I think.
Thank you. I, Supervisor, I move that the board approve following emergency purchase orders from Apollo Fire, $16,823, Baumtree Medical, $18,302.83, JMB Medical, $11,215.43, and Myo Tech, $19,800.
Support.
In terms of a summary, in accordance with resolution passed by the Board of Trustees on March 17th, 2020, regarding COVID-19, which is, reiterates the emergency provisions and the purchasing policy, which can be relied on upon for and for any purchases needed during the state of emergency. There were four purchases requiring board approval that exceeded to the $10,000 limit. The majority of the purchases were for specifically COVID-related equipment and supplies. All were medically related. The Public Safety Department has been pricing out all supplies, searching for the best costs available, are purchasing as a sole source when supplies were unavailable elsewhere. All purchases were approved by the requesting department head, finance director, and two of the full-time electeds prior to the purchase of being made. In accordance with our purchasing policy, any emergency purchases required to come before the Board of Trustees at the next regular board meeting, which is what we're doing this evening. Are there any questions that anybody would have for either Chad, Chris, or Wendy regarding this item? Go ahead, Stephen.
Um, will these purchases, I'm sure you needed to go far and wide to find the best deals, will these affect your budgets at all? And will we be doing a budget amendment? And the second question is, are there any CARE Act money that goes towards this?
Wendy, do you want to try to?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, so currently there is budget dollars available within both the police and fire budgets that can absorb this, but it's highly likely that we will be bringing a budget adjustment at a future meeting once we have all the costs established that we think we're going to need for it. As far as the CARES Act, we are not necessarily through the CARES Act itself, but the CARES Act did give grant money for PPE equipment through FEMA, well FEMA has it, and then also through some other grants. So we've received three grants so far. We will be eligible for the FEMA grant. We've got a $33,000 grant for PPE-type equipment through our Burn Jag Grant, and then we also have about $215,000 that we received through the CARES Act through CDBG, which we'll be bringing forth to you at neck, the next meeting on our plans for how we're going to spend that money. So we will get some money back. How much? I'm not sure at this point in time. So once we have a little bit better handle and some of the funding from the federal government, more of it has been announced, we'll have more better information to talk to the board about.
Thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no further questions or comments at this point, could we have a voice, a voice roll for the votes?
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Next item up on the agenda is consider approval of resolution and furtherance of the tentative settlement in the matter of Meyer versus Canton Township at all.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the attached board resolution upon execution of the settlement agreement, authorize Monday Trumbull as the plan administrator to sign the MERS application for additional service credit purchase and submit the required payment to MERS, the tax resolution. Whereas Public Safety Director Joshua Meyer, Director Meyer, Director Meyer was hired by the Charter Township of Canton in 1997 and has since served the township with distinction in a variety of roles. Whereas in 2012, Director Meyer was promoted to the position of Fire Chief, a non-bargain unit position in which he served the town, the township admirably and was subject to the Canton Township Mayor employee policy. Whereas after four years of distinguished service as Fire Chief, Director Meyer was promoted in 2016 to the position of Director of Public Safety, where he continued to serve well the township overseeing the operations and management of the Township Police and Fire Departments. Whereas a dispute arose concerning the calculation of Director Meyer's defined benefit pension benefit, which the township and Director Meyer have agreed to resolve on terms that the parties believe are beneficial to Director Meyer and the township. Whereas having resolved Director Meyer's concerns about the pension benefit, he has agreed to retire after 23 years of outstanding service and in good standing from employment with the township based on the purchase of two and a half years MERS service credits. Now therefore be a resolved, the Charter, the Canton Township, Ward of Trustees can conditioned upon Director Meyer's acceptance of a retirement agreement in a form approved by the Township Attorney and signed with the Township Supervisor and Clerk, and upon Director Meyer's fulfillment of all conditions set forth in that agreement hereby authorizes the purchase of additional service credits for Director Meyer as shown on the attached MERS service credit purchase request form to be executed by the plan administrator and further authorizes a payment of $75,000 to be distributed in accordance with the retirement agreement. And be a further resolve that Director Meyer's retirement benefit shall be calculated as provided in the collective bargaining agreement covering members of Township's firefighter union. It provides for a 2.8 multiplier through June 3rd, 2013, and a 2.5 multiplier thereafter, but said calculation ending as the date of adoption of the MERS service credit purchase for Director Meyer. Director Meyer shall also be entitled to FAC calculation as provided to members of MERS Division 5 who are employed by the township prior to July 1, 2013, and who are eligible to participate in the firefighter's retirement program as provided in the firefighter's collective bargaining agreement.
Very good. Thank you. Stephen, a second. Okay, so we, in terms of a summary, we have a tentative settlement that's been reached in the matter of Josh Meyer versus Canton Township. The board is being asked to consider or approve the attached resolution and authorize the purchase of service credit for Director Meyer. One finalized note I'd like to make is Mr. Meyer will have 21 days to review and sign the settlement agreement, seven days to revoke after signing said agreement. No further action will be taken to purchase service credit until the eight day after the agreement has been signed. That being said, is there any additional board comment question at this point, or is there any public comment? Is there any, first, let's go for a public comment if we might, Mike.
I am watching to see if anybody, don't appear to see any.
So the process would be to raise their hand to make public comment at this time.
Yeah.
Any public comment?
Um.
Any public comment? Any public comment?
So if it's, I like to make a comment if it's appropriate.
Yeah, now, please, for the trustees, any comment or questions or yes?
Um, I think, yeah, one thing I want to speak to is the agenda item we brought forward earlier, item C1, was the regulated business ordinance that Director Meyer played a substantial role in helping craft with myself and a number of other directors. Would not have been able to do that if it wasn't for him. He was a willing and an amazing partner for the Clerk's Office. I will miss him. I will miss him, you know, starting as an explorer with the township and working his way all the way up through the ranks. Speaks a lot to his character as a person and as an employee of the township, and I will, I will miss him, so.
John, Mr. Anthony.
I just would like to add to that to wish Director Meyer all the best. Thank you for your service. Godspeed and good luck in the future.
Any additional board comment? Go ahead, Stephen.
Director Meyer, Josh is the third Public Safety Director I've worked with as a trustee, and I have always appreciated the open relationship that he had with all of us, the ability to talk to him and discuss things frankly, and I, I really enjoyed working with him the last four years. And I wish him well in this next chapter in his life.
Yeah, I would like to echo that. I wish Director Meyer all of the best. I got to talk to him quite a bit about the juvenile diversion program and the Canton Hate Crimes Coalition. So he was always available to answer questions, and I wish him the best in the future.
Go ahead, Diane.
Yep, and then I too want to wish Josh well and thank him for his service.
Anne Marie.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to add to what the others have said and thank him very much, and he's always very forthcoming with all the faith groups and making sure that all the different cultures in our community felt as part of the community and as part of police, being protective of them and working with them. So thank you very much for all the programs that have been started over the years. I've really enjoyed working with them. Thank you.
Josh, we do wish you the absolute best. Could we call for a roll? Do I see public comment? It's not time for public comment. We've already had to call for public comment. Could we call for a voice roll call?
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Anne Marie Graham, Graham Hudek.
Fine, I did say comment and chat. Was that part of public comment that somebody was trying?
I believe that comment portion was, was done. We are voting.
Okay, sorry, yes.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye. Unanimous vote. That now concludes our formal business for this evening. At this point, is there any additional board comment or staff, any, any comments? Kind of a period we're in right now with COVID. Right now, I think, I believe our next board meeting will be, Mike, I see your hand, our next board meeting will be April 28th. We've got some time bound legal things that we need to take care of, but Mike, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's, that's quite all right. I was just going to say, you know, we are going to be starting the elections process here for the August primary. I'm looking at the calendar now, and the applications for absentee ballots will be going out. But that will be happening after our April 28th meeting, so I just wanted to let people know that. Additionally, you know, lucky that we have a fairly large permanent absentee list, so, you know, 21, over 21,000 people will get an application for an absentee ballot. I've had a lot of additional requests over the last six weeks for obvious reasons, individuals who are interested in not going to the polls in August, but would rather have a ballot mailed to them. If anybody wants to join that permanent list, they can do so on the township website, and there'll be more information about that coming out in the focus next month. But ballot, but the applications will be going out in mid, in mid-May, in mid-May.
I got a message from Director Hohenberger. I guess Stephen is in the, in the meeting as a, an attendee as opposed to.
Okay, I'm on the read.
He was, we promoted him to, to a participant, but it started out that way. Yeah, that's, yeah, there's some, if you, for individuals who are participating at the board level, if you don't log into Zoom through your township email, you will not be able to access the meeting as a panelist. You will come in as an attendee. And that's what, what, what has happened. It happened in the last meeting as well with, I think, so that, it's happened. I always promote people to panelists.
Director, for promoting me.
You're welcome.
Director Hohenberger, in terms of your programming for the summer, your team's made some decisions or a decision that's significant. Do you want to share that now? And what are you looking at in terms of other programming into June?
Certainly, we're constantly evaluating what programs we can and can't have. The biggest announcement that we have is we have with coordination with the other departments and elected official, we have made the decision to cancel the 2020 Liberty Fest. Most of our programs through mid to late June are going to be canceled or postponed. We do have a detailed listing coming out in the next issue of the focus as to what is being canceled, what's being postponed. So take a look at those. Any canceled programs, we will be issuing refunds for as soon as possible. We're getting, if you paid by credit card, you may have already received a refund for those programs. Check, that's going to take us a little bit longer to work through the process to get those refunds out. But any programs that you've paid for that have been canceled will be refunded back to you. You don't, nobody will need to do anything to request those refunds. That'll be done automatically. If you have a membership at the summit, and if you're on the monthly payment plan, we've suspended all monthly payments at this point. And if you've paid for an annual membership, we'll be extending your annual membership based on the length of the shutdown as to be determined.
Very good. Thank you. Very thorough, and I know the directors are meeting on a, on a very regular and ongoing basis on terms of other programming for the rest of the month of June. So those are ongoing conversations that will continue. Jade, Wendy, Chad, Chris, go ahead, Jade.
Yeah, because I have all the Board of Trustees here, it's probably a good time, and we have quite a few attendees to talk about the roads. For those of you that have not been out that have been staying at home, you might not see, but they are starting road projects. Cherry Hill from Canton Center to Hagerty Road, the resurfacing project is moving forward by the county. Bridge Road is about ready to get underway, and we are still working with our engineers and engineering firms on the local road projects. So you will continue to see the road projects proceed as planned. It's just been a little bit slow start because of the contractors and because of the, have been slowed down because of the governor's orders, but they are moving forward. And we have held back a little bit on the sidewalk program for this year until we get back up and running and see what that's going to look like. But those are two big projects that, that I wanted to just address and update everybody on.
Jade, is there a point in which the sidewalk program would just be delayed till next year? Is there a cutoff point that you envision?
Yeah, if you recall, right before all of this happened, we actually came back before the board to get a budget amendment to make this program much bigger this year because it coincided with our water main, our water main replacements. So we're looking at all of that, and what we've done is we have inventoried everything for 2020, and it would be very easy for us to actually just postpone this to 2021 if in fact we cannot get back up and running anytime soon. So I've been working with the engineering department and Erica to look at how we would piece this together and what portion of this, if we did come back up and run and could complete some in 2020, what area would we do? But most likely, there will be a portion of this year's that'll have to get pushed off to 2021.
And then from Chad and Chris, from a public safety perspective, you guys are, you know, doing yeoman's work, and it's a very surreal time. Appreciate everything they're doing, the risks they have to go through every day on the job has just been amplified during this period. Is there anything, Chris, you'd like to share in terms of some of the technical stuff that you guys and your teams have been doing, PPE, that kind of thing? Or is this not really the appropriate environment?
Um, I just say that I appreciate all of the donations from the community coming in, and those are going to good use. We continue to use those for the firefighters and the police officers, and we're continuing to get, gather that PPE as quickly as possible. Becomes difficult, as you can see in the national news, but other than that, the firefighters are doing a great job and outstanding. I couldn't ask for any more from them, and they continue to show up day in and day out, and they're, they're, they're putting their lives on the line, and, and I appreciate that.
From my perspective, I'd like to thank the board. Anytime we needed anything with regards to PPE, we just, we, we, we buy it, we find it. And I'd like to publicly acknowledge the great work of Will Hayes. This, this man's been on the project for, seems like 24/7 since it started. So again, thank you for everything and thanks for all the support.
Any additional board comment at this time? Go ahead, Anne Marie, please.
Yes, thank you very much for everybody on the front lines, and I've heard a lot from residents in terms of maybe even Director Hohenberger, you can talk about the program. There's been a lot of phone calls to residents, wellness checks, and I know they've been appreciated. And when I've spoken to some residents, they've talked about how some of our, they've even gotten food donations from police when they've asked for help. And I think that's really commendable, and it's really good to hear people say, thank you for caring about us and thank you for asking about us. And so Greg, do you want to talk about that? How many calls have been made and how many more are to be made?
Sure, yeah, we've actually reached out to, with John LaFever's really been leading the effort on that for our team, working with Amy Houston and Will Hayes to coordinate volunteers to bring people in to make those calls. I believe we've reached out to everyone, either 70 or 75 and older in the township that we had contacts for. We've reached out to everyone on our list, about 800 phone calls at this point. Most people were just appreciative of the phone call. A handful of people, a small percentage had requests that we were able to help them out with, whether it's prescription pickups or some food deliveries. We'd work with the cert volunteers or our police department to go make those pickups and deliver those items out to folks that are having trouble to get them. So it's been a great program, and I'll supervisor, Supervisor Williams really led the charge with pushing for us to do this program. So it was very helpful to have his support, the contacts that we had, and all the volunteers to help us with that program.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. They've really, people have been appreciative, but also I'm wondering, Chris, you had mentioned something about donations. Are other donations needed to our fire department or our police department or anything? I know you said you've been getting some. Do you need others?
Really, we'll take any donations we can get because we continue to burn through that PPE, the firefighters, they go on one call, they can go through four sets of PPE. So right now, we're currently stocked for a couple of weeks out, and we continue to bring that stuff in, but every donation helps for us. And then if we can't use it for the fire department, we pass that on to the police department and the citizens if needed. So it's always helpful.
So it's mostly PPE you're looking for? I mean, any food collections or anything, or just mostly PPE?
Mostly PPE or a hand sanitizer, and then I believe Police Department's been doing the food collections on that, on that side of the house.
So just to add to what's been said is the, leading the charge for us on the entire COVID response for Canton Township's piece of it outside of the public safety is John LaFever, Patty Esselink, and Amy Houston. The three of them created, developed the COVID hotline, which is 734-3945. The three of them created, developed the COVID hotline, which is 734-394-5440. The purpose of the hotline is two-fold. One, for residents who have needs during this period to call and identify for whoever picks up or returns the call what the needs are. Also, it's the same number to call if you live in the community and you want to help and you want to know how you can help today. That's the number to call, 394-5440, those in need and those who want to help. And then what we're doing is matching both sides, either through other community-based organizations, or as in the case has been described, you know, Patty is dropping off food packages. So please call that number, and I, I think it'll be John LaFever will call you back, or just call John directly, Anne Marie. And he can tell you specific what they're looking for today.
Thanks. Just, just so that you know, the list I got, I mean, you had said you were calling 75 or older, and I know we're down to 70s because the list I got were people in 70s, so you're doing a great job.
Yeah, I think there's probably been 14, 1500 calls. I don't know the exact number. I'll get that out to you tomorrow because John LaFever did do a summary, or Amy did a summary. Between the two of them included was the individuals who utilize our transportation program. They are truly, you know, even more so than the seniors, those are our true shut-ins in the community, don't have transportation. And I think those were a lot of the needs that were met in the last couple of weeks. So I believe there's a total of 50 families, and there's been a lot of conversations with Greg and the other leadership is we want to as rapidly as possible get out of the, the food bank business and get that over to the established community-based organizations that we have, such as the Salvation Army in Plymouth. I know the school district's doing an amazing job. Summer and Anne Marie both sent out notes on that, as well as we've got the Forgotten Harvest Food Bank, and there may be others that I'm not even aware of. So we want to quickly transition out of that business and let those who are doing it for a long time continue to do it. Okay, is there any additional board comment? Seeing none, call for a motion to adjourn. Jade, were you going to say something? Okay, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Again.
Those in favor of the motion as presented through roll call?
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Sigrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
That concludes this meeting. Thank you, everyone, and for those folks online. If there were questions you wanted asked, to have asked, weren't able to, go ahead and send us an email. We will respond. Thank you.